Acceptance of releases.
So, you've got a new computer? And usually when I just come over here. And so, so. So can you help me do that? That's what I hate about it. Okay, because I went back and it's like, I can't do that. Okay.
On overtime? Do we have provisions that we will direct to that?
So then from now on, anytime I come back over here. We're able to get to.
And the reason I ask is if they don't have capacity to do it with regular people, we shouldn't be paying overtime.
I think the only time we pay the overtime is if they work overtime for four days a week on our job.
I understand this, but their lack of capacity should cost us more than a regular hour or a day. It's kind of my decision.
Because I know when I take this home, I automatically connect to my wife.
And I say, well, they ought to be able to do it.
And so we can do the same thing here?
Unless they disclose upfront.
Okay.
And it's probably been in every contract that I just bought it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's ever been. Because I'm having a hard time recalling whatever it is.
Yeah, the way it's written, unless we have discretion and we accelerate it. If we accelerate the schedule, then I think it's fair. But if we don't accelerate the schedule, I don't think it's fair.
Hello?
It is DLZ, and there's a technical issue here, too.
Okay, I am right to the mobile of a meeting with about a hundred people.
Shouldn't that be one fifteen minutes?
I like the guy's smell like heaven.
I'll trade him.
The person that signed it is not your today, so.
Laurie's here?
Laurie's not here. The Brian, yes, so.
Okay.
That must be why he's here.
Because he needs that corrected? Okay, are we ready? All right. I don't know, they're coming quite the conference. Good afternoon. At this time, we're called to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for a meeting of February twenty-seven, twenty, um, twenty-three. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum comprised of Harebrandt and Altman in person and Commissioner Dillinger virtually. We will need to conduct the meeting via roll call vote to comply with state law. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Connor, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll amend the agenda a bit. I don't believe we did roll call votes at our last meeting.
Correct.
That we did do virtually, so I would entertain a motion to ratify all action actions taken at our prior meeting.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Mark Harebrandt?
Aye.
Steve Dillinger?
Aye.
Christine Altman?
Aye.
We will move forward. First item of our regular agenda is approval of Executive Session Memorandum of two twenty-seven, twenty-three.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Second, Dillinger.
All in favor, roll call.
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
And no disrespect, Commissioner, if I just say your last names.
Okay with us.
Perfect.
This is going to take long enough as it is.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
You can go by initials if you'd like. Approval of minutes, two thirteen, twenty-three.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
We have a public hearing on ordinance number O-two, two-seven, two-three-a, an ordinance reestablishing a Hamilton County Bridge Fund. Who will present on this?
Yeah, I can discuss it. So it's, is reestablishing, reestablishing the major bridge fund. Last year, the county council raised it to the maximum rate of point zero three 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 cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. That is, that is the statutory maximum. It could be, and it's going to stay there for two thousand and twenty-four. Again, this is just something that we want to do every year, just to keep it, to reestablish it, sorry.
Okay. And this will be presented to council, or?
So, no.
We will go through the budget process.
Madam President, what we do is we do this, we have to have it done before May of every year. And so once it goes through all the steps through the Board of Commissioners, then we send it to the DLGF. So today, we're asking that Connor, if I'm correct, suspend the rules?
Yeah.
And then adopt on the first reading.
Okay, so, at this point, this is the final county action to go forward.
For you guys, and actually, then Robin will certify, send it down to DLGF, and we'll be good to go.
Got it.
I believe there's a public hearing in there.
Yes.
Yes.
At this point, I'll open for public hearing the matter of ordinance O-two, two-seven, two-three-a, and it's regarding the reestablishment of the county major bridge fund. Would anyone care to address the board? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public meeting. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading. Harebrandt?
Dillinger, second.
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance O-two, two-seven, two-three-a?
Motion to adopt, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, aye, or second?
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Go through that. Plat approval. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have a few plats on the agenda. We have Remington, Section One and Section Two. You may remember those from your last meeting where they received their variance for cul-de-sac length. And the other is the one hundred and sixtieth Street property, which is located on both north and south sides of one hundred and sixtieth Street, east of Cherry Tree Road. For some reason, it's set on the back burner for a couple of years since Martin Marietta ran it through everything, and it's finally coming to be approved. And we recommend approval of the plats.
Motion to approve the plats, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're now ready for other highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today, I have no road cut permits, no private traffic control permits, no vehicle exemption permits. I do have a list dated two twenty-seven, twenty-three of bonds and letters of credit for acceptance. Would recommend these bonds be accepted.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Second, Dillinger.
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you.
I have no bonds or letters of credit for release today, which brings me to agreements and supplements. I have one for your consideration today. This is an engineering agreement for small structure three-three-zero-six-two, Strawtown Avenue over Lincoln Smith Green. This is between, this agreement is between Hamilton County and DLZ in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I do know that Commissioner Altman has pointed out a couple of, or at least one math issue within the agreement, appendix, I believe it's appendix D.
Yes.
That we have two different costs identified. It's a difference of five hundred dollars.
Well, it's to DLZ's fee. Just to let you know, I'm there. It's on the public information meetings.
Correct. So if, if we go with the, with the unit price that is in the left-hand column, that would then raise this to one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, if, if you so choose to, to go that way.
I guess in exchange, I did note, it's probably been in all these contracts, it has an overtime clause, and it's my opinion, on overtime rates, if the county has asked the contractor or an engineer to accelerate the schedule, then I think that would be appropriate. But if it's a regular contract, I don't believe it should be offered without adequate personnel to do it at regular rates. And I would move to strike that portion of the contract without, or add an addendum with an asterisk that it only applies in the event of the owner's acceleration of the project.
Motion to approve the pending amendment. Harebrandt?
Dillinger, second.
Discussion? Any concerns coming from representation in the audience on this? It's a pre-signed contract. Seeing none, all in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you.
Is that just for the amendment or for the whole agreement?
Is as amended, I believe, as a motion.
There you are then.
And it's also, I guess I should clarify, it was also to add the other five hundred dollars.
Correct. We will prepare a revised appendix D. I have no streets for acceptance, no traffic study correspondence, no public quotation results. Brad will have the twenty, twenty-three annual highway bids. I have no official actions correspondence or announcements, so Brad takes the look.
Oh, can we on our standard form make that change on the overtime?
I will make sure, yes.
Thank you.
So we've reviewed the annual bids that we opened at the last meeting, and I have determined what I believe to be the lowest response on responsive bidder for each category, and I'd like to go through that with you. These awards are for the period March first, twenty-twenty-three, to February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. And these will be the documents for you potentially sign, and you can follow along there on that one, Christine, if you'd like to. So for our aggregate category, recommending the award to Irving Materials. They were the only bidder for this category for both stone aggregates and gravel aggregates. For bituminous mixes, our recommendation is for E and B paving. They were the lowest bidder in that category. For liquid asphalt, for plant pickup, we recommend, as like last year, that we award to both Marathon Ashland and Asphalt Materials. We use very little of that, but on occasion, if we have to pick it up, we need to get it from whoever has it available at the time. For the job delivery of our liquid asphalt, mainly for our chip seal program, low bidder and recommendation is Marathon Ashland. For our pipe and drainage structures, corrugated metal pipe and metal pipe arches, our recommendation is to go with Silicon Incorporated. For pre-engineered timber bridges, again, like, like last year, the same company, our recommendation is American Timber Bridge and Culver, the only bidder. Gasoline and fuel, again, is the same supplier for us, which is Sierra Solutions Co-op across the street from us for our fuel. Treated salt, we don't do that right now. That'll be coming up here shortly, as we work on the program for the next winter with our municipalities. For pavement, traffic markings, for paid-in markings, we're recommending, recommending that we go with gridlock traffic systems. And for thermoplastic traffic markings, we go with Aero Marketing Incorporated. For epoxy markings, we did have two bidders, however, I believe we had kind of an unbalanced bid, as one bidder bid a very, very high mobilization fee. We do very little of the epoxy markings, and so our recommendation is we just reject those at this time, and as we determine the need to do it, we'll do it under a public works quotation.
Was it epoxy?
Yeah, epoxy, HC on your list.
Okay.
And we did not have a bidder for eight D. For category nine, which is our weeding and fertilizing, weed control, our recommendation is we award to True Green Limited Partnerships for this year. For tree and stump removal, our recommendation is we go with Save a Tree. Save is the lowest bidder in that category. Traffic signal maintenance, same contractors we've had, Signal Construction Incorporated is our recommendation. And for our mowing program, our recommendation is to go with Bright View Landscaping's LSC, LLC. So with your approval, we'd like to accept those and get those moving. There are no, our bidders notified.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Highway Director on the categories presented on this, for this, for these highway bids. Harebrandt?
Dillinger, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you.
One last thing you should have on your calendars, tentatively, the March third is a highway meeting with us. We do not have at this time items that we need to bring you in to talk about, and that is the same morning as the Noblesville's Pleasant Street update for the owners. So we do not need to have that formal highway meeting with you guys on Friday unless you want to meet with us.
Do you have a burning desire?
No, I do not have a burning desire.
Do you want to sit in on the Noblesville update?
Can.
It's at eight-thirty, and it'll be at the city.
It would be at City Hall?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't have that on my calendar.
Well, what is it going on with Noblesville, Brad?
Steve was asking a question, what that was about.
Ally had, has arranged monthly meetings with the Pleasanci Project to update all the partners. And so she tried to coordinate that with our regular highway meeting, so I didn't have to go and report back. I'll go ahead if, if it gets canceled, I'll go ahead and cover that as president. Otherwise, I invite your, your participation. It was to go back and forth between the city and county highway locations. So that one's on, so I'll go ahead and plan on attending.
Right, that will be Friday at eight-thirty at the city. So, so. Another last thing I just mentioned again, I'll send, I have a Zoom meeting later today with the DNR, who's trying to coordinate with the Governor's Office for the Steve Nation Trail ribbon cutting. And if I get any solid information from them today, I'll send in, send out the meeting invitation to you guys, and it's tentatively set for May ninth, but as I know more, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Is that it for highway?
Yep.
Thank you. Sending our massive quantities. Hamilton County Tourism, Ms. Myers.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you today. I have my phone to friends here in the back, who are really the project managers. But as you know, Hamilton County Tourism at one point looked at, at moving our location, but the pandemic really brought to reality that we need to stay. And so we would like to adapt our current facility for a ten-year growth plan by creating basically adaptive space. So there'll be hotel desks and no offices and a lot of small conference rooms, because that's really what we need. And so we have, we did our due diligence, we did a lot of studying last year led by Tina Rogers, our Director of Resources, and we then let out for, we did get to fifty percent construction documents, let out for bid, got three bids, picked a, picked a bid, an owner, I mean, picked a provider. And so we have worked out with the Hamilton County Tourism Commission to figure out how to make this happen, and so we just would need your permission, since you own the building, to do leaseholder improvements. And we'll also go before the county council, given it's also an asset for them to. Are there any questions? I did provide some background. I think we've really done a lot of homework on this.
A lot of homework.
Yes, a lot of homework. This is probably a five-year plan, actually paused, and then now, but in the long run, I think this is a better option for us. And so the building is deeded to the county, and just wanted your permission to move forward with the contract.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Just for clarification, the work will be performed by Hamilton County Tourism, who is a not-for-profit corporation, and in the opinion of their council, which I concur, does not need to be bonded or treated as a public contract, because they are not-for-profit organization. All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. I'll invite you to.
Good luck, enjoy being under construction.
We're excited.
Clerk of the Circuit Court, Ms. Williams. It's our favorite time of year.
Yes, it just goes by so quick. Are you keeping a powerful Steve's stuff? Just forget it.
Silly you.
I have presented here the polling locations for the municipal election. We have a hundred and eight locations, we have seven new ones, and fifteen precinct changes. Happy to answer any questions, but it just changes all the time.
Were you able to get more schools?
Oh, no. We're, we're still not in school.
That's disappointing.
Parks and, and still some fire stations and some, lots of churches and.
Well, it's good that our churches are stepping up.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
All right, motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Building and grounds, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. This is a paid voucher for Westler concerning Baker's Corner, with survey, design, permitting, phases one, two, including some wastewater, and you will see attached the building hours, you'll see attached any outside services that are rented as well.
And you have reviewed these and?
Wholeheartedly reviewed these.
And, and I just want to point out, you've gone above and beyond your normal work, and we truly appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Ditto. Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. ISSD, Chris Martins.
This is just the orthophotography contract. That bid was evaluated by Joanne County staff, as well as municipality staff. Just have the first signature on that today.
Great, get those earplugs up. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency Management Agency, Mr. Booker.
Sorry, it's just a little busy. We have a tornado warning for the southeast corner of the county right now, but that's just radar indicated, so hopefully we won't have any damage down there.
You know, keep it south central, we're okay.
We bring before the board, we would like to dispose of two assets. We have our two thousand and four Dodge Ram, and also a fuel trailer that are going to the sale lot.
How are you going to, you're going to do that on Gov. deals?
I, I'm not sure of the process. I just, other than asking for the board, I would have to defer my brother. He's still here.
We will look at it now on Gov. Doc, that, for our Gov. Doc.
Yeah, I think, I know that we'll have the manner of disposal when it's disposed of, but I really think when people ask to declare surplus, they need to tell us how they're going to get rid of it.
Okay. Okay.
And I think gov deals is probably the better. I keep finding sites that talk about salvage and it's coming primarily from the sheriff's department. And I don't think that's being, it's not you that did this. I'm not saying it's you, but it's surplus or scrap metal. It had to have been acquired for the purpose of scrap metal and I think it's being misinterpreted. So Connor, give that a shot, would you? Okay. Is there a motion to allow the disposal on gov deals?
So moved, Harebrandt.
Second, Dillinger.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Yeah, we weren't pointing at you. I just, I just had an opportunity to note.
I think Judge Harvey has that covered. The other item that we'd like, I'd like to bring before the board is our emergency management professional, or performance grant, which is for salaries. And that's for 2022 salary reimbursement in the amount of $89,827.62.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
And you've gotten your memo on the issues with accreditation?
Yes.
I'd ask that you talk with safety risk because I think that we may have done some work on something else and have, you need to compare your revisions to the plan that you've got to see if it's consistent with, what is it, Rushford did that?
Okay.
Okay, just get ahold of him and show your language and then make sure we've got things lined up the right way.
Okay.
That's news to me, I just, giving it to you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Commissioner Committee reports.
Just a report and I sent an email out to the entire council and commissioners about Wednesday, April the 19th at 3:30 PM. The town of Arcadia is excited to be able to do a groundbreaking ceremony on their water and wastewater treatment plant that needed some assistance from the county ARPA committee, $2.6 million to be able to make the needed improvements that they, that are needed in the community, as well as help them with some water improvements that were needed, some infrastructure improvements on their water, domestic water system. And that's Wednesday, the 19th of April at 3:30 PM. More details to come.
Oh, it's at 3:30?
3:30 PM.
Oh, good, so there isn't a conflict with the MPO?
No.
Got it. Perfect.
That's all I have.
All right. Steve, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Oh, okay. I, we discussed the coordination meetings with Pleasant Street. I think it'll work out well. Other than that, just normal routine stuff. Attorney?
Yeah, I, we have quite a few things. The first two, I have Brad Bingham from Barnes and Thornburg and Oscar Gutierrez from Bondry here. And this, the first one or two resolutions about the 911 Communication Center financing. Brad, do you want to briefly discuss both resolutions before the commissioners say?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Brad Bingham with Barnes and Thornburg, first time working with counties, looking forward to this. As Connor mentioned, there are two kind of companion resolutions here. The first one kind of described as more of a parameters resolution. It's really just an acknowledgement that the commissioners will move forward with the project and the financing under certain terms and at the building corporation, there will be a building corporation to help do the financing for the project. Again, this is for the new 911 Communication Center. And the maximum principal amount of bonds that can be issued for the project is not to exceed $50 million. It also contemplates that perhaps bond anticipation notes could be issued if it's necessary to do interim financing pending the issuance of those bonds. It would be done through a lease financing with a nonprofit building corporation to be, to be formed or that's currently formed and existing for the county. Maximum lease rental payments would not exceed $4,750,000. Those, those will be less once the actual interest rates would be known on the bonds. And the, the financing itself would be payable from, the first source we're able to be the public state, I'm sorry, the PSAP lit with a backup pledge of property taxes. With that, I will pause for any sort of comments or questions anyone may have on that first resolution.
And that's resolution 02272301.
Okay, and as we go forward, I'm going to look to Boundary to look at what we've got in the bank. I just want to make sure when we have the lid available, we don't ever dip into property taxes or put any burden
Yes, ma'am.
on unnecessary sources. Okay. Is there any other questions?
I don't have any other questions.
Are we ready for a motion?
Just one last.
Yeah, you have more.
This is just sort of a kickoff, if you will. We will come back, I think we're anticipating the May 22nd meeting of the commissioners to really present the actual lease itself and more of the detailed terms of the financing. There'll be a public hearing required. There's a more formal legal process. This is just again kind of the kickoff, if you will.
Right, understood, but before you make that presentation, if you would consider those items, it would be helpful.
Just for the record, the deed has been recorded on this property, the court order transferring real estate. And since we pick up a check, we will have an insured closing and that, we anticipate that to be over by your next meeting. So we are entitled, we're ready to go. And the sooner you can get somebody to do a survey, the other side would like to see the stakes.
One other thing, just on this general subject, I know you have your resolution before. We need to figure out how we involve the E911 Executive Committee with us.
Yes, ma'am.
I think they have some expectations
Yes, ma'am.
of discussions on the scope of the project and cost. I know we're jumping ahead, I'm just putting up some
Yes, ma'am.
items to keep our honor reader.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Steve?
We can't hear you, Steve.
You've got mute on.
Second, Dillinger?
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
And then the second resolution is for the same project is resolution 02272302 is a reimbursement resolution. Brad, do you want to touch on that one as well?
Absolutely. Again, these are sort of a matter of course that most issuers do in connection with the bond financing. It's, it's really just a line in the sand so that for IRS purposes, you just say, look, from this day forward, you know, if I do spend money out of my own coffers on the project, I can reimburse myself with bond proceeds. Today starts a 60-day clock, so we can always go back 60 days prior to today to pick up and, you know, any sort of, you know, construction related, you know, cost you paid for, you can reimburse that out of bond proceeds.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Second, Dillinger?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you.
I have a couple of resolutions, I apologize, but a lot of stuff, we're getting a lot of stuff taken care of and done. I have two resolutions for the Baker's Corner Tiff and the 276 Street Tiff. Cam Starnes is here, if you want to kind of touch on what they both are and let the commissioners know where we stand for this, with this, these two tips.
Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. Cam Starnes of Taff, who, as Connor mentioned, on a pair of initiatives that originated with the Hamilton County Redevelopment Commission with the declaratory resolutions to create the 276 Street and the US 31 North Tiff districts. Since the time that those declaratory resolutions were adopted, both have been subject to plan commission orders adopted by the Hamilton County Plan Commission and the Sisrode Jackson Township Plan Commission declaring that the creation of those Tiff districts is consistent with the comp plan, the comp plans that apply to the areas that are the geography of those declared districts. Before you, our resolutions on both as the next sort of statutorily prescribed step in the establishment of those Tiff districts from here, a tax impact statement prepared by, I believe, Boundary Consultants and disseminated to the overlapping taxing units and the Redevelopment Commission would notice and hold a public hearing prior to considering confirmatory resolutions on the creation of those tests. Any questions on that?
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Any discussion?
This is for the resolution 2272303. This is for the 276 Street Tiff first. Then we have one for the Baker's Corner one afterwards.
Got it. All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
And then resolution 02272304, and this is for the Baker's Corner Tiff.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Aye.
All in favor? Harebrandt?
Aye.
Are you done? Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye, this is crazy. I hate this process. We're just not going to turn you on next time.
I have two more things, I apologize again. Last one is resolution 02272305. It is a resolution for Baker's Corner Project stating that the county will not request any additional funding in addition to the $30 million we've already requested from the state. And this is just a step in the process to help the IFA release the first $10 million for phase one of this project. And that again is resolution 02272305.
Motion to approve. Harebrandt?
Dillinger, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
I just wanted to state real quick that we really appreciate a lot of people from the state working with us on this to help us with some of the additional funding because this, a project like this would not happen without the cooperation of people at the state, the IEDC, the governor's office, and our state and senate.
And I would add that this wouldn't have happened but for the ARPA funds
Yes.
that were made available. I mean, we'd still be looking at ways to fund this project. And we'd probably be years from now.
The last item I have is just to receive the authorization from you three to start the engineering and design and other pre-construction services for phase two of the project, which takes it all the way up to 276 and provides services to the Armory. Marty, is there anything else you want to add to that? Marty Westler and Doug Tishman from Reynolds here as well. So if any questions?
This is engineering?
Engineering. At, we already done survey, correct, Marty? Yes, so engineering design, yeah.
Engineering over?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
And that is all I have.
Yeah, I have just one thing. With your commissioner's hat on, the, the city of Westfield has filed a petition with the Drainage Board to acquire a regulated draining easement on the west side of Carey Road, about a half mile or a quarter mile south of 161st Street. Did check, we do not need a resolution, just a motion approving, receiving the appraisals. And, and there will be a resolution required by the council unless the offer is under $25,000. I don't think that's going to be the case. And then we'll be back to you to ask for authority to move forward with the condemnation. This would be a motion to authorize the re-spraisal of this property and the right-of-way manager for the county to attempt negotiations to acquire.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Okay. Are we finished with the attorney?
I believe so, I'm sorry.
We are finished with the attorney?
Yes.
Why, why then?
We are, we're done, yeah.
Now we're on to the Director of Administration. But I will know we still are on time. Thank God.
We will try and speed forward.
Despite the best efforts of the county attorney.
We're just getting a lot done right now, it's just efficiency.
Connor never sleeps.
I guess not.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Item number one on the agenda, presenting requests from Indiana Peony Festival, Representative Kelly McVeigh seeking permission to use space on the 9th Street side of the Courthouse Square on May 20 from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM to set up a coordinating tent for those attending the festival. She has filled out an event application and has been reviewed by Buildings and Grounds and seeking permission.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
When the peonies bloom, will we have a bouquet in the front?
Probably.
Hopefully we planted some on our property.
The old courthouse is big, every issue.
Perfect.
Yep.
All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item is a revised copy of the alcohol permit application. The board may recall that sometime last year, you approved the policy for Forest to allow alcohol on events for people that rent property out there, for events. And they are submitting this revised application, it's more refined, both Susan, Kathy, and I think Lisa are all three here, if you have any questions regarding the content of that policy.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
Has this stifled any rentals? The policy, or are we okay with a balance between the policy and renters? We're fine? Okay. All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Next item on the list, I have two departments requesting opportunity to meet with the board in work sessions at your March 13th meeting. That would be Jason, actually Jason is asking, looking for April or maybe your first meeting in May. After the legislature's done, so he can address with you how they're changing health department funding, which is a very active statute being processed right now. So.
When do you want to do this?
Be the first meeting in May.
Yeah.
That's also the meeting where the youth assistance, not youth assistance, but recognition awards.
Well, that makes sense because we're going to have to stay anyway. That'll be a good time.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Harebrandt.
Dillinger, second.
If you would ask him to put forth a written summary of the changes before we meet, I think it'd be more productive. All in favor?
Harebrandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Can I ask clarification, is that for both work sessions or just for the health department?
The health department is requesting May when the legislature is done. Parks Department would like to do it first session or first meeting in March.
That's fine.
To discuss some projects and identifying a date to, or a park to title for Terry.
Okay.
So first meeting in March?
Yep.
Next item on the list is Madonna Wagner is here asking permission to use the courthouse image on material for a program. Madonna will come up and explain what she's asking for.
Good afternoon.
Judge Felix is just requesting on the drug court, some of the drug court poster redone by Carmel High School Rapid Art Design, and they may or may not...
Madonna, you need to get to the microphone a little closer if you would...
Sorry about that. Is that better? Is that better?
Yeah, it's better.
Judge Felix asked for, he's redoing the drug court poster that goes out to the jail and it's posted in other places. He's asked Carmel High School Rapid Art Design to come up with a better-looking poster than what we currently have, and they may want to use the county logo. And I didn't want to send it to him until we had permission to do so.
So, it's just the logo, you can't see it, but on the courthouse vision with the circle?
Yes.
Motion to approve, Herr Brandt.
Dillinger, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Herr Brandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank the judge for thinking of that.
Yeah.
Item number five, Captain Logan will take care of under the Sheriff's portion of the agenda. Item number six, you have attached the final version of the Commissioners' priorities for your joint meeting. Just need your blessing on that before I send it off to President Alexander of the Council.
Sumo, Herr Brandt.
Dillinger, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Herr Brandt?
Aye.
Yours is separate.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
I have two more items. One is disposal of surplus equipment from Buildings and Grounds. I believe Mr. Wood chaired a list with you.
Yeah, we've seen the entire list. I make a motion to approve. Herr Brandt?
Dillinger, second.
Discussion. What are you going to do with all your space?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Open up the hallways.
Yeah. Thank you for acting, Mrs. Altman, thanks for walking, thanks for looking at the...
Quite an assortment, it's an eclectic mix of stuff. All in favor?
Herr Brandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item I have is Monica is here to discuss with you an opioid match grant request. She would like to present.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I was asked to be here today, today. So, I don't have a formal presentation for you, but I know that a grant has been developed and council on alcohol and other drugs is a big piece of that. Our department will be the financial arm of the grant, and David Berman has put together the application. The big pieces will be a database for the entire county to be able to get all the statistics together. It'll be nice to have one, one spot where we can have all of the information. The other piece is Gelata, which is a system that mobile integrated health, fire, police, jail, a lot of different agencies can share information, so it's very less time-consuming for people to, if somebody's dealing with a patient, can get information on what they've already had, what resources have already been given to them, that type of thing. Both of those systems are very expensive, so hopefully we'll get this match grant through DMHA to be able to provide the funding for those systems. The other piece is prevention. We will incorporate the drug court, adult probation, Recovery Cafe, suburban north clubs, some of the organizations that we already cover through the Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs, but since this is an opioid-specific grant, we can offset some of those costs so we can keep some of the funds to go to other projects through the Council. So, I think, here, remember, there's some other pieces.
So, if we, what's the county's responsibility on this grant with the match?
There's not a specific match that, it's not dollar for dollar. There is match that is, they would like to see a match, but again, it doesn't have to be dollar for dollar. The ask is for the local opioid settlement funds to be a part of that. And were you presented with the budget yet?
I don't, at least.
So, the total two-year project, it's a two-year grant, would be $588,570. The funds requested from DMHA would be $450,775. And then the match component, $137,795. And then there's another match of $77,795. Sorry, I don't see the breakdown of each of those. Dan, do you have that as a total? Adding those two together would be the match for the county? Oh, wait, sorry. My, my old eyes hasn't...
Yes, 215.
Yeah, so, new expenditures from the opioid settlement funds would be the $137,795. And the previously allocated ARPA funds, so unspent funds that had been previously allocated, there's a total of $39,500. And then Hamilton County Contract for Coordinators Workforce Development and Substance Use Disorder System, $14,000. Jail Training Program, $30,000. And that's it.
Make a motion to approve, Herr Brandt.
Dillinger, second.
Okay, when were we presented that? I'm sorry. It slipped.
Well, I got, remember, they've been working on that grant, I sent it out this weekend because it had to be approved, yeah.
With all these details? Okay. I'm sorry, just looked at. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Herr Brandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
And this has to be submitted tomorrow?
Yes, the deadline is tomorrow, and I think...
I think there's an electronic signature that has to be...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need me to do that?
Well, let's go ahead and authorize you to do it if you're set up to do it.
I know how to do it.
Yeah, well, I've done it before. Is it through DocuSign?
Yeah.
Oh, I can do that. That's technical.
Okay, then we'll have you do it.
Okay, because we don't want any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give a copy of the paperwork just before, if there's anything.
Yeah, I don't recall any.
Yes, I apologize, Kim, I didn't put the application together, so I don't have all of it, but I can give...
Yeah, or just, you know.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, here we go, it's at the back.
I should have the part, but I forgot to.
Yeah, all that detail. Well, it's just the first one. Anyway. Are you done, Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, sure.
Can we just, you're right?
You're fine.
You can do it right there.
Okay, first, the first thing on the agenda for me is the request to dispose of some gym equipment that's located in the Services Building. And the idea was to, at first, try to do a gov.com, try to get rid of it first, and then if we can't sell it all that way, we would have to scrap the rest, scrap and metal dumpsters and demolitions.
Okay. So, you're not going to set a minimum on this?
No, it's pretty old and a lot of it's broken.
Maybe you'd be surprised who worked on it.
That's what we're hoping, we're hoping somebody will want it.
Okay. Are you going to sell it in various lots?
I think so, we're going to try to, we can't, we don't want to try to sell it all, but like each individual piece of equipment, and then the dumbbells and plates and things separately too.
It's just, that's, and Connor, this is the quote I was talking about. Did you see that?
Yeah, and I, I'll be with them and...
Okay. I just want to make sure we're interpreting that statute correctly.
Motion to approve, Herr Brandt.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion. All in favor?
Herr Brandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Okay, you have another item?
Yes, ma'am. The second item is, we had a inspection of our gas pumps and fuel system, and one of our, the fuel pump actually is extremely rusted and needs to be replaced as soon as possible.
Motion to approve, Herr Brandt.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion. All in favor?
Herr Brandt?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay.
I just had a question for Tom. He had a call on 161st and Gray, rode that property over there, the vehicles and the trailers and all that. You know, can you check on that and see where we're, are we up to date with everything?
I will check, I have to, I got a spreadsheet.
Last time I went past, it didn't look bad.
It has, there's a lot of those trailers that are, that are there.
I think, last we knew, they moved, got rid of some in the, in the front, that would be on the west side, but if you go by there, there's a lot back on...
They just pushed it back.
Yeah.
Well, I think they got rid of some and pushed some back, and, but it's still, property should have changed a little bit.
The neighbors said they haven't seen anything move in some time, and so I thought there was supposed to gradually be stuff over time to keep getting rid of it, but they said nothing's happened.
I don't think anything's moved for two years.
Yeah.
Guess it's time.
Probably time, I'll, I'll just check that and be with you.
Thank you.
On enter.
Would you like for me to combine these and read off each one and then make it one motion?
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay, so I have liability trust claims, the clerk's monthly report for January, I have capital asset notification of transfer for the Health Department, I have a capital asset notification of final disposal for the coroner, I have vendor claims, I have a health trust monthly expenditure report, and I have payroll claims for your approval.
Motion to approve all of those items.